I will go ahead and just make sure. Yep, the phone says seven o'clock as well, so I will go ahead and call tonight's meeting of the City Council to order. And could I please have, let's see, can I please have the minutes clerk please?
Mayor Constantine?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Spring?
Yeah.
Martinez Beltran?
Here.
McKay?
Here.
And could you please declare the posting of tonight's agenda?
Today's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with Government Code, Section 54954.2.
Great, thank you very much. And we will start off tonight's meeting by, I'll ask the City Manager, Ms. Turner, if she has a report. You went away from my screen, where'd you go? Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community, and my teammates that have joined us this evening. We have four supplements this evening, all under public comment. I have one item that I want to talk about now, and we'll have a COVID update during the COVID item. So this is an update on the mail theft that we're experiencing here, you know, as many cities are experiencing. So I wanted to give you an update. So the first wave of paper economic stimulus checks began entering the mail on April 22nd. And so the region saw an increase in mail theft due to the stimulus checks being sent out. Our police department has dedicated more patrol officers to the streets to address this uptick in crime. We sent out a Facebook post alerting the community of the mail theft and precautions that we've taken, to include getting mail daily and signing up for informed delivery so that people know what they have coming in their daily mail. The U.S. Postal Investigator Service asks that residents help in protecting themselves from mail theft by picking up their mail every day. The vast majority of mail theft happens at night, overnight. Our police department has conducted surveillance in the area which led to a possible suspect who fled in a vehicle. Detectives are investigating this incident. Our officers are sharing information with a postal investigator who has law enforcement officers that investigate mail theft. Additionally, victims of postal-related crimes can file a complaint with USPS by visiting, excuse me, by, yeah, visiting our website, their website, and it's www.uspis.gov. When the USPS receives a report of a community mailbox burglary, letter carriers will generally deliver a flyer to all affected victims with contact information, guidance on how to be vigilant about financial fraud that may have resulted, and tips to help prevent becoming a victim of mail theft in the future. The United States Postal Investigator Service assists the postal service in the deployment and development of countermeasures to deter mail theft when appropriate. Calls for service for mail theft have decreased since the last uptick in mail theft. And that concludes my report.
You're muted, Rich.
Sorry about that, I didn't hit the button. Anyway, yes, Mr. Larkin, thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Larkin, do you have a report?
I do. Mayor, the High Speed Rail's draft EIR for the San Jose-Tomerset subsection is out on the streets, available for review. It's a little difficult to find in the sense that it is hidden in plain sight, but if you go to the website, hsr.ca.gov, right on the homepage, there is a link that says San Jose-Tomerset Environmental Documents. If you click on that link and you scroll all the way toward, or not all the way, but most of the way towards the bottom, you'll see there's a whole lot of things, links there. One says copies of the draft EIR, EIS, that is not the link to the IR, that's just a link to get copies. If you want to see the actual report, you just keep scrolling and there's a, there's a link called "Report" with a plus sign, and if you click on that plus sign, it gives you all the links to the various sections of the report that are online. There are some technical documents that are too large to be posted online, and if you want copies of those, you'll have to contact High Speed Rail, but those are the, those are the super highly technical documents. The only other thing I wanted to say is that this, we'll get into the larger COVID-19 update, as Christina mentioned, but the state has a new website active today, it's covid19.ca.gov. It's a lot more comprehensive than the prior hodgepodge that they had, and so for people looking to get information about the shelter-in-place orders, the state's shelter-in-place orders, we're testing our other resources, that link is much better.
Great, thank you very much. Now, now, open this up for public comment. This is for public comment, is not for items on tonight's agenda, however, if there is something that we may need to get back to you on, I believe we'll have participants, either they can email us directly with their contact information, or they can put their contact information that they'd like to share in the chat, and then that way, we can get back to you with that. So I will look to see if there's any members of the public wishing to address this in public comment. Not seeing any hands up, I'll give another second or two to make sure people can find that. Not seeing any, I will then go ahead and close public comment and ask my colleagues for adoption of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, and could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Member Carr?
Yes.
Spring?
Aye.
Martinez Beltran?
Aye.
McKay?
Aye.
Okay, and then tonight's consent calendar consists of six items. Anyone in the public may pull an item by going ahead and raising your hand, and I will go ahead and ask my colleagues tonight if there are any, if there's any consent items they'd like to pull. Seeing none, oh, at least, hold on. Mr. Branowski? You have an item you wish to pull?
Yes, good evening, I would like to pull item number four on the consent calendar.
Okay, pull item number four. And so would the motioner be admirable to that motion without item number four? Or did we make a motion, we had a motion on that one? Yeah, never mind. So a motion for a consent calendar is except for omitting item number four.
So moved.
Okay, motion, a second roll call vote, please?
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Spring?
Aye.
Martinez Beltran?
Aye.
McKay?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move on to item four, which is to certify the results of the March 3rd, 2020 special municipal election. Mr. Branowski, did you have any specific questions, or would you like a report?
I would like to make public comment on it.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for taking this off the agenda and allowing me to speak. There were, of course, many reasons why voters rejected Measure A, and I don't pretend to have any hard data to back up a ranked list, but I do have a strong hunch that members of this council completely discount that many voters rejected Measure A, first and foremost, because there was no economic justification for the claimed citizen benefit in return for giving a developer what they wanted. Blaming the gullible residents is a lot easier. This time, the Whole Foods is a convenient scapegoat. In my opinion, that is wrong, arrogant, and will have future consequences, which because of the current difficult situation are likely to be even more relevant, which is why I'm speaking. During recent budget discussions, the importance of economic development in leading to an eventual recovery from the current crisis has been mentioned numerous times, and I think almost everyone agrees and supports responsible growth more than ever. But as you formally closed the Measure A chapter tonight, I urge you to recognize that there are now many organized citizens who oppose and will continue to oppose projects that are not run with full transparency, including having an unbiased economic justification. Just because a developer wants to build something or is able to get financing is not a reasonable economic analysis. Improving, approving any large project or those involving planned development, conditional use permits, zoning or general plan amendments with no economic impact analysis at all, or one that is based only on the most optimistic assumptions, it ignores all risk factors, is not a serious way to run a city. And Measure A showed that it doesn't take a large budget to get the citizens of Morgan Hill, who know what kind of town they want, to have their voices heard when you refuse to listen. Development for development's sake is one reason the budget was in a near crisis state before anyone ever heard the word coronavirus, and doing things the same way is not the answer going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branowski. Okay, now there's my regular screen, all right. Can I get a motion for item number four?
With approval.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, roll call vote, please?
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Spring?
Aye.
Martinez Beltran?
Aye.
McKay?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes the consent calendar. We'll now move up to a public hearing. Item number seven, it was Initiate Annual Assessment Process for Landscape Assessment District Number One.
Good evening, Mayor Councilmembers, Chris Gioni, Public Services Director. This item is one you have, you hear every year, and we come back to the council multiple times for it. The city has one landscape assessment district that is comprised of 19 individual subareas. Each one is kind of run like their own mini-district, and these subareas are basically public property owned by the city right away, or park spaces, but maintained through, maintained by the city or city contractors through assessments that are charged to the homeowners. And so we levy these assessments each year, and this is the first of the two-part piece that the council will do. They'll order, you would order the final assessments at the, at the next meeting, which would be scheduled for June 3rd. So included in this report is the Engineers Report, which basically says what the assessments will be and shows the detail of each of the, the subareas. Just, there's not a huge difference in this year from last year's update. As the council will remember, we had two areas where the city took to a vote in each of these subareas, and increase in the assessment in one area, that increase was approved, the other one, it was not. So this year's assessment includes increases for that one subarea, which is Mill Creek, which was approved by the residents. Other than that, there are no increases in the assessments. We've been pretty successful over the last couple of years of reaching out to residents, and really, in a couple areas, increasing the assessments. In one area, they took on their own management of the area with their, their HOA. So we have, we've, we've done pretty well. There's still more work to be done as far as outreach to residents in each of these areas, and we'll continue to do that. It is, it is a lot of, a lot of communication to try and make that happen, but we continue to work on that. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions on tonight's report.
Okay, are there any questions on this item? I'm not seeing any hands going, are you having difficulty raising your hand? Oh, there you go.
It's just slow, sorry.
Councilmember McKay beat you, so constantly with the AU makeover.
Should be a simple question, that is, that on, on one of the districts, La Grande Estates had, has quite a disparity. Now, is the beginning fund essentially destined to be the same as the ending fund? They're, they're basically, we're supposed to be replenishing the budget, and so that we should begin and end at the same place, basically, as far as budget-wise?
In theory, if, if they held steady at their desired fund balance, that's what would be desired. However, in some years, there's capital things that might need to be done, like resurfacing a tennis court, and that fund balance might drop and build back up, so we try and manage it that way. I did neglect to mention in my report, there are several, or a limited number of areas where the residents have not been interested in increasing the assessments, and some of the, some of the areas have a negative fund balance based on actions that occurred probably more than a decade ago. However, we're, with each of those, that they aren't, the residents aren't interested in increasing their assessment, we are doing basically weed abatement only and trying to gradually work those fund balances back to zero.
Okay, so that's what I noticed, all right, thank you.
And you got some member, Mayor Procham, Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I just wanted to know, for example, with the Parsons Corner, who detached from the district assessment, is there, do they decide to what standards they will keep that area, or is there some type of transition from the city? How does that work?
So in Parsons Corner specifically, it was really unique because the, the area was, had an HOA and had, had the, the landscape assessment district. So we were able to easily transition. Additionally, the property that was shared was not city-owned, it was actually owned by the Parsons Corner, and it was, there was a public access easement, so there was an easier transition to have them take over. So basically, now the property is completely run by them, and we don't have any input as a city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, then I will go ahead and move, I'll open it for public comment and ask if there's any members of the public wishing to address this on this item. I'll give it a second. Don't see any hands going up. I will then go ahead and ask my colleagues for any discussion or action.
Question.
You have another question?
Yeah, the question is, can we deal with all these with one motion, or do we have to go through each one individually?
You can vote to about the resolution.
You can move staff recommendation.
Okay, so we're all through resolutions?
You can, you can move staff recommendation, which is all of the different required actions.
Okay, in that case, I move to approve based upon staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I just went back to, I went back to old habits there really quick. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Spring?
Aye.
Martinez Beltran?
Aye.
McKay?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes item seven, moving on to item eight, which is the review, the need to continue the local emergency due to COVID-19 response and shelter-in-place orders.
So I'll give, start the report, and then I'll turn it over to City Manager Turner. Under the government code, we're required to review our emergency proclamation every 60 days, and believe it or not, we're coming up on 60 days, at least before our next meeting. So we're asking council to review the emergency proclamation, keeping in mind that we're still under a state of emergency, both at the state and county level, and the shelter-in-place orders, while they've been listed slightly, are still very much in effect. So, so we're recommending no change to our emergency proclamation, but we're, this is also an opportunity to talk about the things that we have been doing and are doing, so I'm going to let City Manager Turner address those issues.
Great, thank you, Don. So I wanted to give just a few updates, and then talk about what we're hearing about from the governor about possibly reopening up California. So the first few updates, one is for testing in the community. So we just learned that there are new testing facilities, and one of them is in South County. And so there, it's now Christopher High School in Gilroy, as well as James Lick High School in East San Jose. And testing at these sites is by appointment only, and the screening and testing criteria are based on the state's guidelines, and they are planning to be open from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and right now, each site has the capacity to serve up to 132 individuals daily. The county did announce that there's going to be more sites opening up as, as testing is certainly a priority. The next area that I wanted to mention relates to grocery bags. So last week, we sent letters to each of our grocery store managers, letting them know that due to the pandemic, we temporarily discontinued our compliance checks and follow-up, follow-up actions on the requirement for retail stores to charge for single-use checkout bags. The other topic is masks, and as you're probably aware, the, the new order that went into effect on Monday extends the shelter-in-place through May 31st. And one of the, one of the changes in the new order that impacts all residents and businesses relates to social distancing protocols, and specifically, all businesses must now ensure that both their store, that both their personnel in the business, as well as the customers, wear face coverings when entering facilities, except for those, the young who are not required to wear face coverings. Now with that, the county does strongly recommend that all community members wear face coverings whenever out doing essential activities. So the requirement, the responsibilities on businesses, so essential businesses that are open, they have to make sure that their employees and customers are wearing the masks, and then outside of that, for other essential activities, it's a high recommendation, but not a requirement. So that is new with this order. So now I kind of wanted to, to transition a little bit to, to talk about what, what does it mean for, for business to open up, and what does it mean for us to open back up for business in Morgan Hill? So we're hearing that Governor Newsom is anticipated to announce and roll out that he's going to allow certain retail operations to open up, and it could be as early as Friday. Now, in, in looking at what the county has sent out, you know, we don't know yet if Dr. Sarah Cody in the, in the Public Health Office is going to have those state allowances apply for us. You know, as, as we've heard with the orders, you know, you have the state order, you have the county order, and then whichever one is stricter is the one that prevails. And so while the state might open up certain retail, that doesn't necessarily reflect that, what's going to happen in the county. So we will learn more. But in the midst of all of this, it's important for us to make sure that we, as a city, you know, are doing what we can and continue to help our, our businesses to get ready to get, to get open. And so, you know, some of the, some of the different things relate to, you know, things we've already done, like the curbside parking for restaurants in downtown, you know. So now, if curbside pickups are going to be allowed for other sort of businesses, what does that mean? You know, most of that's going to be on private property, so it doesn't necessarily impact our rules, but are there other sort of restrictions that we, as a city, have in place related to CUPs or other sort of rules that really would prohibit or restrict certain businesses to open or to change their, their business practices? And so we're starting to look at some of those and work with our partners on that. And, you know, other sort of things, you know, that starting to look at is, you know, what does a shop local campaign look like, so that we can get people shopping here, you know, going to our stores that are open, you know, rather than ordering online where we don't receive much sales tax? And so what I've asked Edith to do is to spend a few minutes just talking about and refreshing the council and communities on what we've done, you know, what, what, what we've done to support our businesses, what we're in the midst of right now, and that some of the things that we're working on, you know, as we get closer to be, be able to open back up. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And Michelle, would you mind just giving me that power to share my screen? All right, yes, I now have that power. Okay, here we go. So Edith, if you could take it away, and just let me know when to, to proceed through the PowerPoint.
Absolutely. Well, this is going to be intended to be quick and just a quick update, so you can just move it along, Christina. Thank you. So what are we doing? This is the same slide that we shared last time. So what is the focus of economic development? A big part of our focus is providing the information as we learn of it, put it in on, putting it on our website, and then working with the business community on technical or financial assistance. Next slide. One of the things that we are doing is put together newsletters. So hopefully, everybody has seen our newsletters, we have issued three of them, and in this newsletters, we try to share the links to the relevant information that we have, whatever is new. A couple of new additions to the, to the website that I wanted to mention tonight, next slide, includes things like, well, who's hiring in the community? We know that there's some layoffs, but who is hiring, and can we, can we share that information with, with folks that might be looking for work? So we started populating that database. We also, at the request, I believe that it came up at one of the community town hall meetings, somebody said, well, do you have a list of who is open? So we also started populating a list of businesses that may be open. Now, as you can imagine, this is, this is going to be an ever-growing and moving piece because we expect that to continue to change. So we don't expect it to be perfect, the community, the business community can tell us, hey, add me to your list. Next slide. We are rounding the corner with our business resiliency roundtables. We've already had one on financial resources, one on hospitality, one on communications, one on retail, and then the next one is on restaurants, a very specific focus on restaurants. We are working with the California Restaurants Association for that particular roundtable, and then we thought, well, we're getting all these really great ideas through the roundtables, what if we have one very last one where we can put a bow on what we've heard and what we've learned? And in the last newsletter, we asked the community, hey, if you have any ideas of what we should be doing to support this economic recovery, send them our way. We are not creating any judgment of the idea, simply identifying, identifying a, a good list. Okay. Next slide. So as we start thinking about the ideas that are coming to us, what are those activities that we, we should be doing above and beyond what we're doing today? We're going to start thinking about them in the context of our guiding principles, the economic blueprint principles, the, the areas that we've identified. Next slide, tourism, retail, jobs, and healthcare. But in addition to that, we need to look at those strategies with very specific lenses associated with, are they helping small businesses? Because a strategy for, for a large company is not going to be the same for a small business. Are we specifically developing strategies for downtown? Well, what about the shopping center where we don't control? So as we open up retail, pickup, curbside pickup for retail, most of that retail is going to be in shopping centers, and we don't necessarily control the way that they're going to lay out those locations. What are we doing, again, specifically for restaurants, for retail? What about the projects in the pipeline? Are the projects going to be able to move forward? We're seeing some, some shifting in some of those projects. And what about new development? What is the message to the, to the business community as to if we are open for business? What is that message for us? So as we think about the, the list of strategies, we want to put on this lens, right, to kind of take them through, through how the various strategies are going to help the various areas, in addition to, to what I mentioned, the economic blueprint. Next slide. And then once we have that identified, then the work begins with the conversation with the council, the community, and, and the rest of the teammates. Do the strategies, do they cost money? Do they cost manpower? Do we have it in-house? Is that, is that something that we can do within existing resources? Would we need new ones? How do they align with the city's goals, the, the strategies that the council has identified? Again, economic blueprint, general plan, telecommunications, any other strategies? How hard would the strategies be able to implement? Is that something that is fairly easy? Is it complex? Would it require consultants? Is it within our control of the city, or do we need to advocate for the state and the county? And timing is also a big issue, you know, is this strategy something we will be able to turn around rather quickly? And then finally, once we've looked at it through those lenses and had that conversation, then I think the final conversation will be, well, if we could only do one thing, or two, or three, what are the things that we should be focusing on? So on one hand, we already have a fairly good work program that needs to be done, that is kind of continuing to run the business. is kind of continuing to run the business as usual and keep City Hall open. Well, what about adding more stuff? Is something going to give? What is the opportunity cost if we start pivoting with our work program? So with that, just, this is kind of just to give you a flavor of the things that we're thinking about, the number of strategies that, that we are receiving. Many of you have participated either at the town hall meetings or at the roundtables. So you've heard them already, right? If it's for restaurants, how are they going to be able to distance tables? If it's, if it's for retail, is there a shop local campaign? What does that look like? So again, we've already started creating that extensive list and started to think about all these various lenses that, that I talked about briefly. And I think with that, that concludes my presentation, very brief, and happy to engage with any conversation or questions.
Thank you, Edith. I wanted to make one more comment before we opened it up for council questions and, and discussion. And that's just related to our, our advocacy work, you know. You know, as we've talked about before, we're in the unfortunate position that because of the size of our city, we don't receive some of the funding that, you know, the bigger cities receive. You know, there's this 500,000 in population threshold, and then another 50,000. So I just want to summarize the advocacy letters that have gone out. So at, beginning of April, we sent out a letter to the Senate supporting financial stimulus packages for cities under 500,000. Followed that up with a letter to Representative Laufren and many local reps and agencies requesting funding to support housing and homeless programs. A couple of weeks later, a letter to the senators, and once again to our representatives, supporting federal stimulus funds and the Coronavirus Community Relief Act, which is H.R. 6467. And then just recently, each of the council members were asked to sign on a letter, and Councilmember Martinez Beltran asked that we send a consolidated letter to our, to our governor, supporting immediate relief for undocumented workers. And so we sent out a letter with each of your signatures related to that. And so those are some of the ways in which we've been trying to advocate for funding. The ICMA, as well as the League, are helping to work for cities, you know, our size, so that we can see some direct funding, so that we can have actual dollars to, to help out with, you know, some of the programs that we would really like to fund to, to help both residents as well as businesses. And so that concludes our report, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Hey, Councilmember McKay.
Thank you very much for, for the report, the update. I know that staff is working away diligently. I have attended probably most every town hall and every roundtable, and I am listening to the community, and I'm hearing the responses that staff is giving back to the community, including the mayor during your coffee. And there's a lot of good stuff coming out of the community. And the good news is I'm, I'm also seeing that other council members are watching these, these different community meetings. And it's good to see that we're all, you know, really paying attention, being involved, and, you know, at this point, really ready to lead. I guess what, what I would like to do is ask, is there a, is there a list of items that could be a priority that we should be working on? There, you know, I've heard so much in these different community discussions, and there's so many good ideas out there. I had a brief conversation with Councilmember Carr, and I know that he had a lot of things that he was thinking about, and I would sure like to hear what, what he had to say, but I, I don't know if that's, if that's maybe already covered in, in something that staff was working on. So I'd like to know more about what's coming forward. And what I'm looking at is this COVID-19 pandemic has created a situation where we have to really closely look at what we're doing with the budget and everything, which ties completely into what we have to do with the budget, with the budget update anyway. So I'd love to see how those things tie together, because we're moving in a direction where we have to get creative, where we have to open up opportunities for businesses, because we need business revenues. And I'm, I'm really worried about the future. I would really love to get the community on board, understanding some of the wonderful development opportunities, because those are the things that we're going to need in the future. And if this is the right time to introduce that, I mean, I probably have more questions than, you know, than I can express right now. So I guess my question is, what, is there something else we can be looking at that, that is more definitive right now?
So I, the question that I think I heard is, you know, you heard about, you know, some of the things that we have worked on, we're working on, and, and that are sort of on the horizon. And I think you're probably focused more on the horizon piece as, as Morgan Hill gets to reopen up. And you're asking about a list of potential ways in which we help our businesses open up. Is that, is that the question at hand?
Yeah. What can we be doing near term? You know, start to talk about what's going to happen a little bit further down the road, those kind of things. Again, I, I would like to hear from my fellow council members also. We've seen some ideas come forward. We had, you know, we, we threw out the idea of working on Economic Development Task Force. We explored that. We realized we can't do it. We're doing some other great work, and I appreciate what we're doing. What else is out there that we're doing? Maybe stuff that we ought to know about that, that you are doing that is very impressive besides what's already been announced.
Yeah, no, we, we've put out, we've put out, you know, kind of a listing of, you know, by department. We've also arranged it by residents and by businesses, but we'd be happy to bring back, you know, a, a more complete list of, of what we're doing and, and potentials for the future.
Okay, I will ask my colleagues to ask some questions at this point, and then we can have discussion after I've already opened it up for a public comment from the, the public. And next up, Mayor Portem, Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christina and Edith for, for doing that, and all the staff. I know you're running 100 miles an hour, doing a fantastic job, by the way, not only noticed here, but noticed by other communities. So thank you. I'm, I've got a couple of questions. The first one was, when, I guess going all the way back to talking about the emergency order, what, what is your recommendation at this point? We know that we will be continuing essentially sheltering in place until the end of May. We don't know what it looks like after that. We don't have the testing that we, we, you know, the mayor has, has been very active on trying to get for us and, and other mayors as well. What, at this point, what is our best guess? I guess that's what I'm asking.
What is our best guess about opening back up?
As about, for the length that we should, you're asking us to consider the emergency order and extending that. What is our best estimate for how long we should extend that? And, and I guess why for the public?
Yeah. Dawn, do you want to first answer from a, a perspective of what we're legally required to do? And I can talk a little bit more about what opening up looks like in, in Morgan Hill.
Right. So we're legally required to review the emergency order every 60 days or, or less, but generally every 60 days. And I think as long as we have city offices closed and city facilities closed, we would recommend continuing that emergency order, because that, that's the basis of the order, is that we're unable to, to maintain all of our normally important positions. So, and so our, the, the criteria is that our resources are depleted or overwhelmed, and they, and they are, because we've had to check down our facilities. So that's how long we'll continue it. I don't think we have an estimate as to how long we're going to have to keep our facilities closed. I think even as this state begins to open, state and the county begin to open up, and the shelter in place restrictions are limited, will still, are lifted somewhat, we'll still have to keep some of our facilities closed. We may modify our order, but it'll probably be in place for some time.
So it sounds like we would be, we would be looking to extend this for another 60 days?
I think that's, I mean, it's, it's hard to predict what's going to happen 60 days from now, but I suspect when we're back in a couple months, and, and we'll still have some form of the order in place.
So I would just add to that, as I mentioned before, you know, we have the state order, and we have the county order, and it's whatever, whichever one is more restrictive, you know, applies and governs what we do. And we as a city, you know, are bound to follow, you know, the orders. And so, you know, we get questions like, you know, why aren't we fighting harder to, you know, to lift the, to lift the order? And, you know, really, it's up to the county and to the, to the advice and restrictions that the county public health officer puts in place. And, you know, I, I will say that it is now becoming more widely accepted, the notion that we could have a second wave, that, you know, we, the scenario where the shelter in place is lifted, and then the number of cases increases, and we go back to a shelter in place. And so, you know, that, that could also impact how long we have our emergency order in place. And to your question about, you know, why have it in place, you know, besides the reasons why, the, the reasons Dawn listed, also having that, that emergency order in place allows us to be able to file for fun, federal funds for, you know, our emergency, the costs that we're incurring during, during our emergency.
Sure. Okay. And we, as you said, we have a statewide order, and then we've got a county order, and we are, I mean, one of the most impacted counties.
Yes.
Okay. Great. So the next question that I had was for, maybe for Edith, and listening to your great synopsis of kind of where we're at, and some of the ideas that you're, you know, vetting constantly, and many. What, you talked about a hiring that you've added to the, the website, who's hiring and who's open? And I wondered with the hiring, is there any type of a local hiring priority for Morgan Hill?
The, the website that we, the information that we're putting on the website is specifically for Morgan Hill, Morgan Hill companies.
But I mean, is there, I guess in the recruitment and in the hiring that those companies are doing, is there any priority for Morgan Hill residents or?
Um.
Not that you know. Okay. Okay. That was just a question that I had. The other question I wanted to ask about was, when we, we were talking about the roundtables, which were great, and the business letters, newsletters that you have, all of those are on the website, those three business letters? Okay, I only have the one. So the, the last, you talked about the strategic roundtable at the end, and, and getting the, you know, kind of all of the greatest tips that you've heard over, and I think that's a fantastic idea. I wondered if we could have some type of a community workshop on reopening, a community workshop on our recovery. And I always find, you know, I can be up thinking of what I think might be the greatest things, and then a resident has the best idea always. And so I just think that might be a great opportunity, and I wondered if that's something that you're thinking about doing, or we could do.
Well, thank you. The idea of having a last roundtable to just talk about the issue, the, the suggestions is something that is fairly new. We would certainly, I would welcome the, the opportunity to, to invite more folks to come in. I guess the, what I would have to think about, or what we would have to sort out is, how do we do a workshop that is specifically to focus on the recovery of businesses versus the recovery of the city as a whole and residents? Because there's, that is a different shopping list, if you will, right? How to use the facilities, how to get around, how to do business here, but for themselves as, as residents. Certainly, once we have the data, I would welcome your help in getting the word out, and, and we're in with Maureen and Michelle to distribute it widely. We would welcome anybody that don't have to own a business. If they have an idea, send them our way. We, with the last newsletter, we started collecting a couple of ideas that are coming in. I will say that for all of the roundtables, the PowerPoint presentation and the actual video is posted on the website as well.
Okay. And that, I mean, I, I agree with you, Edith. I think that having the business community is one subset, but I'll tell you what, the community workshop, I'm asking, and maybe it's Christina, if, if that's something we could do, because I see the budget conversations also, and how, and where do we want to spend if, you know, we need to spend some dollars on recovery? And so I think that's a bit of a wider community conversation of how we focus our efforts.
Yeah, we have next Friday, so week from Friday is our budget workshop. So that's Friday, May 15th, starting at nine in the morning. So that would be the first, or the next opportunity besides our town halls for the community to engage. And, and so we can, you know, look to see if, you know, we wanted to add another community meeting on top of that, that would focus more on, on the business, businesses and business resiliency.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Rich, you're on mute. Yeah, I forgot to hit the button. Thank you, Mayor Portem. Councilmember Springer, you're next.
Good. Thank you, Mayor. It's hard to frame it into question, but I'll, I'll try my best. Bear with me. The, with regards to the testing, and, and the reason I'm asking that question is, the whole way to reopen, right? For me, ties into having the data of how safe is our community right now? How many cases do we have? Do we have zero? Do we have a lot? None of us really knows, right? I don't know how many of us got tested. I, I know I didn't get tested, because I don't qualify to get tested. And, and, and the question many of us really have, when can we get tested? And when can we have data for our area that shows us we're still a hotspot? Or no, we're actually a fairly safe zone? And I think knowing that would help us set the right priorities as well. And, and I don't hear, there's people that tell me they got tested, that they're not sick or anything, and others tell me you can't get tested because you're not in the category of getting tested. Well, which one is it? How do we, how do we know? And, and how do we get the right advice out in our community? Hey, here's a way you can get tested. If you want to pay for it, or if you have insurance, you can get tested regardless of your state or here, only if you're in that category. I think there's confusion around there, and, and I don't, I don't think we have the right answers yet.
Yeah, and if I could just comment on that, from what I'm hearing from the county, you know, right now, they're still not doing testing on asymptomatic people, but they want to be able to do that, you know, to see how many people that aren't showing symptoms are actually carriers. And they are spending more time and resources now on tracing, and so looking at cases and to see, you know, how the, the tracing works and, and, you know, the, the spheres in which those that are infected have infected other people and so forth. So heading in the right direction, but, you know, not, not there yet.
Do, are we talking, I, I know that there are some labs, lab companies in our area, even locally, even downtown. Have we talked to any of those, if they would be willing, if they have the bandwidth to, to ease the restriction of who can get tested? I, I don't know if that's a legal question or not, but.
Um, those are, I mean, I, it's a good question. I think it's, and it's partly due to the availability of tests, although that's loosening up. I would encourage you to look at the new state website, the covid19.ca.gov, because it actually does answer a lot of the questions about where you can get testing, testing, tested, if you're symptom-free, and which communities have it. And I think with the new addition of testing centers in Gilroy, there may be options that weren't available until this week for, for people. But there are a lot of good testing resources on that website, and because it's, the testing's being done at the state and county level, it's updated much more quickly than we can get information out, because they're creating the information, so they have it much more readily available.
Yes, it's, it's that there has to be a way around. There are companies, obviously, if you work for the apples of the world, you can get tested as an employee. If you work for a company like mine, you cannot get tested. Well, why not?
And if the city had resources to pay for it, like one city in the north paid, then the city can pay for testing, but that's not something that we have the resources to pay for.
Yeah. The, the, but I, so that, I, I think we should explore more options, because that leads to the whole topic of how to best reopen and where to set priority. Because I want to give it another spin, and I also ask, if you have considered, really, and it's a little bit tied into what my colleague earlier said, like getting input from our community, and it will come down as, when does our community? Uh, and it will come down as when does our community trust our businesses again? That they actually will go out and do the shop? We, we, we can open up as many businesses as we want downtown. If no one trusts them and feels safe, uh, they will not make business and we will not get, get the, the revenues we think we might be getting. So, it, it, as much effort has to be spent on making sure whatever we do has to be as safe as possible. That our residents will trust themselves and us and, and the community again, that they actually will go out again. Go out and sit in a restaurant, go out and, and go in, in a, in a smaller business and so on. And, and, and maybe shop less online. And, and I, I have not heard anything from that angle yet. And I don't know if that's a Edith question or one for you, Christina.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think, you know, reading into your question, you know, you know, what are the ways that we as a city can help build that trust factor that our businesses are in fact following, you know, the right protocols, you know? And so, um, you know, you, you get into some very interesting issues there with, um, you know, even, you know, say facial coverings. And, you know, so one, one specific example is that, is, you know, the grocery stores. And so, the, you know, grocery stores are required to enforce their own employees and the customers wearing facial, facial masks. Now, if they don't wear them, you know, the store is advised to, um, ask the customer to leave. And if they refuse to leave, you know, um, we would treat it as trespassing, you know? But there's only so much that we can do from that, um, after the fact. But, you know, um, from the proactive perspective, you know, a lot of that's, you know, um, the compliance factors is the county. Now, Edith, from the, from the working with the businesses, um, now they're, they're not open, you know? Any thoughts in, you know, proactive measures that we can take to build that trust factor?
Thank you. Uh, I actually am very appreciative of this question, council member. Because I was, um, I forgot to mention, um, that Visit Morgan Hill, uh, our partner organization on tourism, invested money to go purchase masks and gloves that they're going to distribute to our restaurants and wineries and hotels. And, and this is, this is really great news because we had heard some complaint come into City Hall about some restaurants not having masks. And, um, with the lack and the shortage of that, I was so thrilled to see Visit Morgan Hill step up and, and, and get those resources. So, again, so we can increase the, uh, the confidence, uh, across the board. Um, and since I'm on that topic, you guys have seen that newsletter, that, uh, press release? That really packages very nicely so many companies that are doing things above and beyond, um, to help with the recovery. And even with that press release sending it out, we got comments back from some folks, uh, that are doing other stuff. And there's, and they're saying, hey, we too are helping out this way. So, that's really great news.
Thank you. And, and, and you, you had the job listing and all, also that Edith, I'm not convinced that that's where we should spend a lot of our efforts. There are sites out there and I think someone in the public just mentioned that as well. And, and, and you will never catch up. I think personally, I, and I don't know if you have these kinds of talks, I, it's kind of a question, Dee Dee. But for me, it's more important that the businesses who want to open up, that they actually have their own websites updated with phone numbers, which hours are they open? And that they're also staffed to answer phone calls and emails and so on. I think that is part of the process. Businesses will have to change the way they approach customers moving forward. It will take months, if not longer, until we're back in a normal state. And I don't know if you're having these kinds of discussions. It's not a, how do we get best, best out of the recession? It's how do we best get folks back to A, work and B, uh, the customers go and visit the businesses again?
Right, um, thank you. I'm glad that you mentioned that as well. I see Steve Chappell with the question or the comment on, on, um, the chat. So, thank you for mentioning it. I, um, as a matter of fact, seeing that comment, I, uh, it made me reflect on that, that the effort that we have, it's this window right now because we saw the need. It actually came up at one of the meetings. Uh, I believe it was, uh, perhaps one of you that brought it up. Um, as to, hey, what are we doing? How do we get, um, how do we match people that are looking for a job and those that got displaced? Um, and given the current circumstances, it just felt like the right thing. So, we just invested a little bit of time to go chase that information and put it in one place. Uh, but, but certainly I don't see that as something that we could or should be doing on a regular basis. Because that is not necessarily the focus that we should have. And, um, I have now joined this new Facebook group that, uh, I just got introduced to tonight. Um, so, so very good point. I think that as part of the work program for Economic Development, we recognize that right now we're pivoting to address the emergency today and try to be as responsive as we can. And there's some stuff that we're doing right now that is going to have a little bit of a runway. And, and, and sooner rather than later, we're going to have to figure out, well, what is the overall, uh, strategy? And what is the strategy? How does that fit within the existing work program?
If I could just also add, you know, I think that, um, I want to make sure everyone knows that besides, you know, retail, besides, you know, um, restaurants and downtown shops and so forth, you know, working with, um, larger businesses and, you know, other sectors, like for instance, now, you know, our Ford store is now open. And so, we've worked with them on, you know, figuring out how they can open and how they can properly do sales outside or online and start selling more cars and, and vehicles again. Um, you know, so it is, you know, it is above and beyond, um, you know, uh, traditional retail and, and restaurants and so forth. And, and the, the other point I want to make there is, you know, also, you know, one of the things that we're looking at as a team is, you know, you know, looking at, um, you know, also how does the work that we're putting in, you know, equate to revenue for us? You know, so we, we want to, you know, also make sure we're focusing our, our time and our resources, you know, in areas that are going to mean more sales tax for us and, and more TOT for us into the future, you know, that, you know, that help us as well.
Yeah, and, and I, I, thank you. I proposed the, the, you know, the concept of town hall meetings right at the beginning of, of the shelter in place. And, and you started doing that and I think it's been quite successful. I, I, I would suggest that, that you consider one with specifically with the topic to get input from our residents. A, what, what do they think is needed that they feel safe enough to go, uh, uh, visit our local businesses again? And, and, and spend their money there? I'll give you a good example, uh, Ford is a good example. Uh, I had the issue with my car. Uh, they came, picked up the car at my house. Uh, the, the guy was wearing a mask, uh, and they will drop it off again once it's fixed. I don't have to go there and, and not know who do I deal with and is it safe or so? And I think this is the new way of doing business for the next few months. And, and, and if we just open up businesses and, and our businesses think people will to show up as they always did, that might not work. So, they have to go beyond what they used to do. And, and that might require education, creative thinking and, and also suggestions from, I don't have all the ideas, I admit. But, uh, by talking to people around me, uh, you usually come up with better ideas. And maybe there might be an idea, Christine, I don't know, or Edith, if you have considered that? Special town hall topic?
Um, no, we haven't specifically, um, you know, thought about focusing one of our town halls on that, but I think it's a good idea.
And, and then the, the, maybe for Edith too, you know, I understand you're pretty much focusing on, on, on the business. But our businesses will not be able to make any business if, if people who are out of work are still out of work, right? So, I think a lot of focus really has to be, how do we get people back to, to work again, back to their jobs that they lost, right? And, and, and that might go beyond what we can do in Morgan Hill? Because a lot of people who lost their jobs work outside our community. So, I don't know if you're, start having discussions with some of the bigger employees, uh, that laid off people temporarily. What are you going to do to, or what can we help you to, to hire people back again? As soon as people are back again, they're more willing to spend more money and that will help by itself. So, it's a different angle of, 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 of kind of, of growing the economy again, right? And, and I'd like to hear more from that angle because I think that's key to success.
We have, um, reached out to our largest employers as well. Councilmember, um, specifically, um, with phone calls, uh, personal reach out to those, those folks. Uh, the largest employers, the largest sales tax generators in trying to, to see what, if they have information for financial resources? What do they need from us? Um, at this point, um, I think that the companies and what we're hearing from companies is that they are adjusting. They are very appreciative of the city's efforts. Uh, over and over again, people were very happy to say, thank you for getting this information in front of us and, and, uh, letting us know that they are applying for PPP or other resources. Certainly, it is part of our work program to, to think through what is it that we can do to help them? We are, uh, having those conversations with them. There is nothing right now, council member, that I can, uh, that will crystallize in something general for, for all of them. Because the, the various companies, you know, they're responding to it based on their own industry. Like some of them, you know, they're still hiring, Pyramid is an example, right? And they just want to get the word out, they're still looking for employees, uh, all sensors, so on and so forth. Um, so, I guess the, the response for some of those folks is going to have to be on a case by case basis. And we're also reaching out to the development, uh, folks, uh, you know, folks like Evergreen Development, the shopping center on Butterfield and Cochrane, that we already started, you know, the, the improvements are already underway. But we are expecting that project to shift, to respond to the economy. And, and we know that there's already shifting going on within some of those tenants' expectations.
Did, have you had any, any chats with groups? And, and probably my colleague Larry Carr has better connections than I, so such as Silicon Valley Leadership Group and so on. The, I think they might have insight into, to who laid off and who is about to hire again. It, because we won't be able to do it just locally, it has to be a regional, a Silicon Valley effort. And, and the effort has to be, how do we get our people back to work again? And as soon as they're back to work and have income again, they will spend again. Uh, I think that there has to be a lot more focus on, on, on how do we best do that? And how do, what can we do as a city together with our partner cities and, and, and groups who have connections? Uh, to make that happen? Instead of just focusing on, on every small business that might, might, might get a couple of customers? I think if we get thousands of people back to work, that will have a much bigger impact on, on, on our local economy.
We will add it to the agenda to our work program. We are working collaboratively with Joint Venture and SVIDA. Uh, but we will certainly add it as part of, as part of the list of things and I appreciate the comments.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate all you do.
And Councilmember Spring, um, on that regard also, you, you brought up the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. Carl Gardino just sent out a, uh, email just today, um, asking, uh, for mayors to join in on the Silicon Valley Recovery Roundtable. So, that's something that was initiated by, uh, Mayor Sam Licardo of San Jose. So, as you, as you mentioned, those are things that are certain, are coming into the works as we speak. Okay, and now I'll go into Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, on that last point, Councilmember Spring, a lot of hiring information is available through, um, the Silk Valley Strong website. Um, as I've talked with, uh, the leaders that have put that together and the folks that are leading the Silk Valley Resiliency Task Force that the mayor just talked about, that's where they're hoping that businesses are going to funnel, um, all of that. I know my company has, uh, most of the high-tech companies, um, through both Joint Venture and the Silk Valley Leadership Group, they're, they're putting that kind of information on there so that it's not, um, you know, 15 different cities or 15 different nonprofit organizations so that it's all together. As you said, a lot of our residents don't work for Company Morgan Hill. Uh, so, um, it makes sense for that to have that regional approach. But let me get to a question before the mayor suggested I ask a question. Uh, I want to sort of focus back on the, the resolution at hand and the item that's before us. Um, the Mayor Protem asked a question about, we're going to have to do this again, when does this come up? And I want to make sure I understand clearly, uh, in the report, uh, maybe you can help us out. We, by, uh, by government code, we have to reapprove this at least once every 60 days?
It's not reapprove, it just says review and consider whether it needs to continue. So, you don't actually have to take a formal action unless the council wants to rescind the proclamation.
Okay.
Um, but every, every 60 days, we'll, we'll come back to you, um, with the opportunity to review what we're doing and then make a determination whether or not you want to rescind the proclamation.
Okay, great. Uh, and then sort of along those lines, um, uh, either for Dawn and/or Christina, um, we've been operating under this for, uh, a while now. Did we, did we include the right authorities? Did we include the right, um, contracting amounts? Uh, are there things that we didn't include that we should be talking about tonight? Um, are there things that are unnecessary that are, um, that we approved in the original resolution?
So, I'll start and then I think, I'm sure Christina will want to talk about the contracting authority. But in terms of the, what we did, the government code just under the, um, emergency proclamation just gives us powers to, to, um, move more quickly than we'd otherwise be able to move on things. So, in terms of what we did under the emergency proclamation, it's, it simply cites to the government code section that grants us those powers. Um, so there's nothing more or less than we, than we want to do. Um, some of the things that we've said in there, um, things like, um, timeframes, like the Permanent Street Mining Act, we're not going to deem projects approved just because we can't get them in the door and processed as quickly as we are supposed to under the government code. Those types of things aren't specifically authorized in the emergency proclamation. We're operating under the assumption that it's within our emergency authority and that, um, nobody can get a court order right now to compel us to approve a project that we're not ready to approve anyway. But I'll let Christina respond about the contracting authority.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the resolution allows us to be able to waive the purchasing policy and, and to go outside of, you know, our purchasing ordinance. And it also allows, uh, me to enter into contracts that are up to 150,000 without city council approval. And we would bring back any such contracts for council ratification. And so, we haven't had to use either of those provisions, meaning, um, you know, waiving the requirements of our purchasing ordinance or, um, any contracts that are outside of my normal, usual, regular authority. And so, um, while we haven't yet, I still would just recommend keeping those provisions in, in place and that, that they are needed.
Okay, okay. That's good to hear. So, actually tonight, we're not being asked to reapprove the emergency proclamation. We're just reviewing it, um, understanding the current, uh, conditions and understanding that it's going to continue and we'll be seeing it again within the next 60 days.
Yep.
Okay, um, Mayor, I don't have any other questions, but after you open it up to the public, I do, uh, have comments.
Understood. And at this time, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. And I'm not seeing any hands up. So, um, go ahead and, uh, Ms. Councilmember Carr, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Um, first, I wanted to commend staff, uh, for the report. Um, I appreciate seeing and hearing sort of in a more comprehensive fashion the things that we are doing to aid our local economy, to be partners with, uh, local businesses, big and small, uh, and the actions that have taken place. Um, Edith, thanks for putting together some reports about, um, some slides and some information about things that we can continue doing and moving forward doing. Um, and I want to make some comments about that and some suggestions. And maybe it's, um, by the time I'm done, and Mayor, it's not going to be too long. Uh, I think it will be a suggestion for a future agenda item. Um, Councilmember McKay started off the question, um, and answers by asking about some of the things we're doing and what more can we be doing? We've all, um, had different ideas. Uh, he commented about how, um, and rightfully so, that, uh, as, as a team, we've all been out there gathering lots of information from these wonderful roundtables that have been going on with, um, just quite impressive panelists, uh, that are bringing a wealth of information in. Um, the, the town halls that have been led by both professional staff and Mayor, you have led those as well. You've continued on your coffees. Uh, the Mayor Protem, you've been doing, um, uh, uh, video sessions with people out there. And so, we've been learning. And so we've been learning lots of different information and I'd like us to find a way to bring this back in a way that we're looking at, how do we take this information and now be proactive and lead the way as we move forward into looking at segments of our community that are going to be able to start opening up? That we're going to be able to, as, as the governor has announced, we're waiting for, to see if the county is going to feel the same way, that we're going to be able to start providing some services. When that moment happens, we don't want the city of Morgan Hill to be the thing that might slow someone down. We want to have the table set and be ready so that when that moment happens, if a, if a, a local business or even a large business has the ability to take advantage of that moment, that they can. And we're ready to, we've already put everything in place, we're their partner, we're holding their hands. And we've built the community trust that Councilmember Spring has been talking about. So appropriately so, you're absolutely right. If the doors open and no one shows up, we haven't really done our job. So that's a really valid point and I think the city manager talked about a shop local campaign and perhaps that is one of the things we think about in talking about a shop local campaign is, is building that trust factor up. And I think one of the other ways that we can do that is both the governor and the county have talked about guidelines that every business will have to have in order to open up and they'll have to have those. I know my company, we have those at all of our stores, you have to have those posted. So there's samples out there. But you know, for, for those businesses that aren't open today, perhaps even for the really small ones that wouldn't even know where to start in developing those. Maybe we could be working with them to again, get them ready and to help build the trust of their customers back. So in this idea of how do we prep for reopening? You know, it, it, it shouldn't be lost on any of us that reopening is going to be harder than closing down ever was. There are going to be huge challenges out there, both for us as a city and for businesses and our economy. So how can we help? I would like to ask that we come back and, you know, hopefully it's not too much to ask that we come back at the, in two weeks at the next council meeting, because I think these things, there, there are some of these aspects that are very urgent. And we come back with how we are preparing for reopening. And I think some of the things I'd like to make sure that we hit on in, in this sort of discussion and plan, if you will, is restaurants, how are we working with our restaurants? We all, I think automatically first think about downtown, but we've got significantly more restaurants that are not in downtown. And how are we doing things to allow them to do their curbside pickup? How are we doing things to help them and downtown businesses with, with actually being able to do more outdoor seating, because that's more likely where they're going to be able to start. How do we look at other retail, both small and large? And, and, and I think we ought to be, and quite honestly, we ought to be categorizing some things by who are our high sales tax generators? So that we can make sure that we're taking our fiduciary responsibility serious and making sure that we're bringing in the revenues that it takes to run the city, that it takes to protect the city. I'd like us to think about different other categories that are important to our economy in the hospitality industry and specifically in downtown and the things that we've all heard about what we could be doing in downtown. I think we ought to take a look at a lot of different policies that we have just across the board in the city of Morgan Hill. And let me give some examples. We have a lot of conditional use permits under which our businesses operate. And, and they, and they pertain to, you know, perhaps a physical location. Are any of those conditional uses hindering a, a business's ability to open up? Whether it be open up under the short term or under the long term, as we think about social distancing, probably being the norm for quite some time. And that companies are probably going to need to be working on multiple shifts. Do we have conditional uses that limit their hours of operation? And therefore they can't work on multiple shifts. And so some people are going to get left out. So we might want to be reviewing those. Also under those policies are fee, fee freeze policy. And is that something that we want to continue on as an economic development tool in the city of Morgan Hill? I think we've all learned how important telecommunications are. None of us could be able to be on this meeting tonight or work from home or our kids being able to learn remotely if we didn't have some of the telecommunications tools that we do have today. And so we heard a couple of meetings ago from John Lang about that RFP. And I think we're in a place where we all recognize we got to keep that moving, if not fast track that and figure out how to expand those opportunities to people that don't have them currently. Down the road, I think we ought to be looking at capital investments. What are our investments today? And are they really going to move, move the needle in the short, medium and long term? And if so, great, what do we do to keep those moving? If not, are there things that we want to perhaps hold off on, maybe get shovel ready? Wait for the infrastructure funding bill that we continue to hear is coming and that our federal government usually does in times of economic struggle? And then back to just generally economic developments. It's time that we sort of set some expectations in economic development. We have an economic development blueprint and I, I, I think most of us would agree, it is our roadmap. It's time that we reconfirm that. It's time that we set the expectations about where we want to go in economic development, short, medium and long term. And then go do it and get, get going, do it. Put all of the city's efforts behind those things. It doesn't necessarily mean more resources in terms of budget and money. But how do we put cities' efforts and resources behind those things? So that we're all working together as a team on what we believe are the economic development efforts that will move the needle and, and, and help us out. And, and finally, I think we ought to be looking at what of these things can we be doing in partnership? Clearly the chamber is a very important partner for us right now and always, but right now. And what things, what of these items that I think we need to do, should we be doing in partnership with the chamber? What things are they good at that we can say that you got to go do that and we're going to do some other things? Look at some of our other partnerships, the YMCA. How can the YMCA, how's the YMCA going to help us provide recreation services under this new norm? And what is that going to look like in the future? And of course, are always thinking about our schools and our partnership with our schools and how we can continue to help them and they can continue to help us. I do want to touch on the budget really quick as well. If in this report, I, I think it would be great to be able to talk about some of the things, some of the actions that we need to be considering and probably taking under the current fiscal year. What should we be doing today through the end of the fiscal year? We're going to have a day-long session about next fiscal year. And I know Christina, that you've already done significant things under this fiscal year. But are there more things and are there things that the council needs to take actions on that are not administrative? Or that you need the council to be able to set some tone and leadership on between now and the end of the fiscal year? So that we're in a better place when the new fiscal year begins. And I think the way that we need to structure this is in what are the immediate short-term needs? And between, you know, now and the next time we meet in two weeks, some of those might be moot points. But what are medium and what are long-range goals and, and, and actions? And what of those actions require city council action? Tonight, we heard a lot of great things about what our staff team are doing under their authorities. And I think that's awesome and they're leading the way and they're showing the community that city government does have a role in, 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 in our quality of life and preserving our quality of life and improving it. And in helping us sustain what we have here in Morgan Hill. And, and it's time for the council to do the same. And what are the actions that we need to take? If, if nothing else, presenting this sort of a plan out into the community and then taking the action steps that are required. And that might be a lot to, to ask to be put together in two weeks. So whatever we can get back in two weeks would be great, knowing that we're going to continue to work on it, continue to build upon it. Because we're going to continue to learn more and more is going to happen. But hopefully in that two-week timeframe, we'll be able to come back and we'll be able to make some, some really good statements about where we want to go and, and, and hopefully some really profound actions that are going to help us get there. And now we'll take a breath, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember McKay.
There, found the unmute button. So, well, you know, I guess I'm going to start by saying that it's, it's really, really heartening and encouraging to see that, quite frankly, most of us as council members are listening and we, we're just thinking so similarly. A lot of what I wanted to say no longer needs to be said because my fellow council members and the Mayor Pro Tem have already said those things. And I think it's, it's really important that everybody understands that, you know, how much in agreement we really are. I think our priorities tend to be different, you know, but what we prioritize, that, you know, there's really nothing that's been said that I, that I wouldn't say that's really important. So I just want to express that because I think we're all listening, we're paying attention. And, and we're just going to push in certain areas differently. So there's so little left for me to say. One of the things I did want to say is, you know, I hope that with the curbside, obviously with, with the curbside retail, we expand our curbside, you know. I think it's been focused at restaurant, I hope we expand that curbside parking policy throughout the down and weather and wherever else in the city it might be needed. Such is a comment, question, comment. I think Larry hit on something that I really think that I, I'd really like to see and that is that we, we take any ideas from our community, you know, as, as both Councilmember Spring and, and Mayor Pro Town Martinez Beltran said. Take the feedback from the community, business community, residents in the community. And when they say, look, this is an idea that might help streamline, get somebody moving, moving better, moving faster. We should take that seriously and see if we can fast-track it. You know, I think this is what we're seeing, this COVID-19 pandemic has shown that we can be, we can move quickly. And so let's continue to do that. I think it's really important. A lot is at stake, so we should be moving quickly. So good ideas, I'd love to see them move forward. Some, an idea from the community, actually, I believe might have come from Matt Wendt. He said that, he asked, you know, can we use Channel 17? It's a resource, it's already there, we're already, we've already have it. And I know all about saving water and, and, you know, when I should be watering my, my lawn. But maybe we could use that as a resource and say, hey, businesses, go ahead, put together a nice little video, something kind of cute, interesting, informative. And maybe we can start to put those out on our Channel 17 site. Let's, maybe that could be a resource for the community, something that, that again, that idea came out of the community, it wasn't mine. And in general, maybe just collect videos from everybody in the city and post them where, you know, we can on, on a city website or put them out in the 411. Just to again, continue to show the face of our community, whether it's business or residents, just show them, just, let's show each other what we're doing. Because I think one of the things that everybody misses is that, is that touch and feel of, of, of each other. And so maybe we can kind of substitute a little bit of that and see if people can kind of get feeling good about what we're really doing individually. And then I'm going to, I'm going to finish this because again, so much was already said that I really wanted to, to say. I'm going to ask, I think Larry touched on it, Councilmember Carr. What is it that staff would like us to be doing? What would you like me to be doing right now? How can I help? I, I just want to emphasize that. I would love to get a genuine response, whether now or send me an email or text or whatever, but tell me, what, what can I be doing to help? While everybody else is running around putting together these great work plans, you know, all that stuff. What can I be doing besides paying attention and trying to understand what the community and, and our staff needs? That's it, thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Spring, you may want to check your volume.
There we go, unmuting would help. The, thank you, Mayor, I really appreciate all the good comments my colleagues made, many I agree with. Personally, I, I, my gut feeling tells me life will be different thereafter. And I don't think we should just continue as if nothing would happen as soon as possible. I think it's always an opportunity sometimes to, to do a little bit of a reset and hey, is what we have planned in, in the past, is that still the right way for our community moving forward? And that many, maybe for me, working in, in, in an environment like this with Zoom and WebEx and these kinds of meetings, this has been, this is part of my, my day job, right, as I call it. But for many other people, they had never used anything like that and now they've become experts in using these tools. So, so that life has changed for many people, also how they communicate, how they interact, how they shop, how they do business and so on. And I, I think there has to be a revision at some point to our blueprint as well in the context of what has changed and, and, and I think we have to take a second look. Is it, is it still valid the way it was before or do we have to make certain adjustments? So that we do attract the, the right kind of businesses that are a good fit in the context of life has changed and it will, will, will never, it will never be the same as it has before. Just because people's behavior has changed drastically. Now, now here is, is, is the amazing experience of our community, really a huge bravo to, to so many people who have stepped up as individuals or groups or nonprofits to help. They create it mass, they, they, they organize PPs and so on. And, and, and here's really a request to, to Edith and our staff. I think we have to work with our nonprofit partners locally, regionally. And, and connect them with our businesses. And there is a need from businesses, so hey, I need this. And maybe some of those nonprofits have the resources and the talent and the ideas to fill some of the needs where the city itself might not have the finances or so. But it's almost like an exchange, right? What you need and, and who can provide that? And I think if we would ask our nonprofit partners and residents who are willing to, to help in this exchange of, A, Business A needs this, maybe someone says, okay, I'll, I'll take that, I'll help here. If we could, could connect the needs and, and, and the opportunities to give, that would be an amazing, amazing way to include everyone in our community. And it's such a hugely giving community that I think we should ask all those folks who are willing to participate. And that might require some organization to do so. But a lot of our nonprofits have kind of lost, lost their role a little bit because there's no events, there's no fundraising. They don't really know, what am I doing this year? But if we give them a purpose again and say, hey, we need you, and maybe you change your mission temporarily. But here, help, help our small restaurants to get the PPs they need or masks and then whatever it takes, right? I don't have all the ideas, but I, I, I see a huge need of connecting businesses with nonprofits and individuals who are willing to give. And, and I encourage us, and I'm more than willing to help in that effort if I can be of help. As John mentioned, ask for help and you will be given help. But don't forget about the nonprofits and all the willing people in, in our community. And, and I really, really I come back to reopening has to be safe and it has to be data-driven to some degree. I'm, I'm much more willing to open quickly if I know we're out of the woods and then we're not a hotspot and we're not in danger. Versus, hey, no, there's just still way too many cases around us and I might not get sick. But me, but me by meeting someone else who, who is at risk, I might cause that person to get sick. And we just need to be cognizant of, of that factor. And that fear is still instilled in many people in our community that are, are in the at-risk category. They are afraid to go out and, and, and to build up that trust will be so essential. And I, I think that will lead back to showing data and having data and, and data comes with testing. And I think we need to do more and more quickly on that. So that, that's some of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spring. Mayor Pro Town, Martina Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Emma. I appreciate everybody's comments because they're all, they're all right, hitting the head right on the nail. This is, this is exactly where we want to be, the conversations we want to have. You, you all are just bringing up such great ideas. I guess, you know, one, one of the reasons is that I'm asking about, like, I, I think it was Councilmember Spring. But if we can ask for a local hire with our businesses for a priority, I think it would be important to have a priority for those who live here in South County to have more dollars to for those who live here in South County to have more dollars to spend here. We can't, obviously, we can't make businesses, you know, rehire or, but locally, I think we could make the ask, if you are able to hire, is there any way that you could consider even South County? Doesn't just have to be Morgan Hill. I mean, we've got plenty of neighbors in Gilroy that come and eat at our restaurants and use our services. And those, those tax dollars count. And so if we can, you know, encourage them, and I know they would be willing to look at, many would be willing to look at some kind of a local hiring priority. I think that would, that would be a wonderful thing. Another thing, you know, I thought, I, I just, I don't know where this would sit. Maybe it's an agenda item. Maybe it's a council discussion about looking at our TOT for our hotels. We know that they're one of the groups that have been hit so hard. We also know that they're one of the largest contributors to our bottom line for our general fund. So I think we're both in this together. Maybe we look at asking or considering if we give some grace on the TOT. Some way, I have no idea, but, and then we have some kind of ask them to do local discounts for family. Once things open up, that might come to town for an event that might be in town. Ask them to do price matches with maybe some other areas that might have a lower price point if they're able to do that. And this way we would be able to get our TOT, overall TOT up, which they would lose, right? If they, if they don't do price matching and they don't give local discounts because they just simply can't afford it. But we've still got this TOT. Then we both lose the way I see it. But if, if we're able to kind of work together, then maybe we could come up with something that gets us both a little, to be a little bit better off. Another area I really wanted to, to talk about was looking at our arts, looking at our organizations and, and programming that we're doing for kids and for families. I mean, it has been such a hardship to be sheltered with three small kids. And I know everybody who has children, it's such a struggle and, and saying that is an understatement. I don't know how to give the emphasis. I know that all families and parents are experiencing that tremendously. And so if we can find a way to partner with those groups to come, you know, as we recover, and maybe those are some of our generators. If, if we're able to kind of look at, you know, the, the arts and maybe a few of those that, that can do it carefully and as they open, where they open, how they open, what programs that are socially distanced can be done. I think that would be great. Looking at our partners like YMCA, that's a huge, you know, council member Carr mentioned the YMCA. I mean, they're a huge city partner. We couldn't do half of what, any of what we do with our recreation program without them. So how do we figure out, again, same situation with the hotels? How do we figure out where we're able to, you know, come together and, and, and make some progress there? But the children's programming, I think, is really, really key. The learning and loving the, you know, all of those, those associations. Then the projects that can, looking at our projects, you know, whether it's Edith, whether it's Chris, whether it's our community development, housing, the projects that are able to drive our local spending. So not so much the soft and direct, but directly impact our local spending. Can we move those up on the list? Can we give them more priority so that we can try to see, you know, generate some of those, those local dollars to come back to us in a direct impact? And there was, there was talking about the businesses and the trust. I think that was council member spring and, and council member McKay talking about earning the trust and getting that back from our businesses. And I absolutely think that that is also an onus on the businesses and how are they, how are they taking this shelter in place? Because the reality is that we cannot, as, as has been said, make people act a certain way if they are fearful because they do not want to get sick because they see the data, because they know what is happening nationwide. We're not going to get anybody there. But if, if there is word of mouth, we've seen so much go through wildfire through our community by word of mouth. And by residents testifying, you know, I went here, I went there and, and you'll see it. I went here, everybody had masks, everybody was socially distanced. We just heard council member spring give a great example of, of some excellent customer service where he felt safe. If our businesses are doing that, the, and we can communicate that and share that, that's going to drive the trust because I know it does for me and it does for, you know, the people that I care about. I mean, those are the things that they're looking at as well. So I think that's something that, that we could look at that. You know, the hotels, what their protocols are and all of that. And then I, I do want to go back and, you know, and ask, maybe this is, I know we have an agenda item later where we ask for future agendas, but the community workshop on how we recover and open, I think is something really important for the community to bring their ideas, the greater community. When I say that, I mean, everybody who's bringing their tax dollars and it's coming into our general fund, that they bring their ideas on where they want to prioritize, we're going to have to do some spending. And where is that? Now, we also have some expertise in-house that's going to be able to channel that, those ideas and focus in on where those ideas go. But I think it's a great, it's, it's a great generator for me when I talk with residents and they bring all of their ideas and whether they're a business owner, whether they're a martial arts owner, whether they're a hairdresser, it doesn't matter. They're coming from different perspectives. And I think that could bring an incredible wealth to us. And I think that that's, you know, those are really the things that, that are going to drive this. You know, there's, as we're talking about recovery and, and, and what's happening today, we just heard, or at least I hope you heard that the Morgan Hill Community Foundation has established a fund that's looking to help residents, it's looking to help businesses. And so I hope that people will come together and embrace that as another way. We cannot do everything as the city, you know, this is something I was very passionate about. Came and spoke with all, you know, we all want to make everybody whole and we just simply can't. And so this is a way where our communities come together like we always do and trying to figure out how we can make that work. So this is, it's been kicked off with $10,000 from the board members. You know, I don't think that there's any other, there isn't a better example of the community coming together. You know, I want to, I want to thank some of the people who are on this call, you know, Nick Gage, Matt Went, Steve Cox, the whole Morgan Hill Community Board that came together and supported this and ran with the idea. And I think this will bring a great legacy for Morgan Hill, not just now, but in the future, because we will see other emergencies. And what's happening right here, what's been happening with Edith, what's been happening with the round tables, what's been happening on the town halls, all of that is what's gotten us to this point. And I, I, I don't think this is any time for us to let off the gas. So thank you for everything that you're doing, Christina, the effort that you're leading. Everyone on this call, all of my colleagues. I hope that people know, everyone is out there doing what they can. And, and all of the people who've done the masks, who have, you know, stepped up in the community. There's no way that we can, can announce and credit everybody, but you're doing the right things. And that's what's going to get us over the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. And that's one of the things that makes this city so great. It's, it's, it's our, our neighbors that always step up and, and help each other. So as Mayor Portem mentioned, yeah, we, the city can't do it, but similar to like when a natural disaster hits and we tell people that they have to be self-sufficient for three days because there's not enough firefighters, there's not enough police officers to, to help them, that we have to be self-sufficient. This is something that's very similar to that. And our neighbors have stepped up big time and that's just what we do here in Morgan Hill. So really appreciated that. And as customer McKay said, a lot of it's already been said. I do want to touch on a couple of things that I was involved in a Zoom meeting this Monday that was actually initiated by a letter that the city association had sent to the county asking about testing. And this goes to councilmember Springs comments earlier about, you know, getting testing and how's that going and why is it so confusing? And a lot of the issue is the fact that there isn't enough, and we've heard this on the news exhaustively, that there's just not enough testing. And in the county right now, they're currently, they're testing about 300 tests a day. They're hoping to increase that very shortly to a thousand. But part of the issue is that they don't have enough free agent, or they don't have enough swabs. We've all heard that. It's, it's supplies that they don't have enough of. So we are not unique in that regard. The, what's going on nationwide is happening right here. Also, the concerns that we are talking about in this council are concerns that have been voiced by other councils as well. So we're not mutually exclusive when it comes to the, the concerns that we're, we're voicing right now. And I believe that we're going to have to tag this as a county together. Morgan Hill by itself can't fix it. So we, we need to be a team. And also on that call that the city, the city association had was the president of the board supervisors as well as the CEO of the county and the other, and all 15 mayors were, were on that Zoom. So, and we're planning another one next Tuesday. So these are things that we are just really kind of ramping up. We don't have all the answers yet. A lot of the questions that have been asked and things that have been asked that the, my colleagues have asked of staff, you know, we don't really have the answers yet. So we're, we're working on it and we're, we're going through this emergency together. And we're going to have to come up with these answers together. But understand that our teammates are working very, very hard. And a lot of the things that we've asked for are already in the works. It's just, you know, it's, it's hard to get all the information out. The, the city manager sent out an email just before this meeting with a, with a, with a very comprehensive update on, on things that are just going on right now. But it's, it's, I mean, as, as we all see through the county, we're getting information constantly every day. Sometimes, you know, we, we get something an hour later, that's old news. So, and again, the council member springs a question, again, also talking about testing. It is confusing because I got a letter from Kaiser saying that they were having testing. However, you still had to have certain criteria, you had to match certain criteria. So we're just not up to that ability yet where people who want to get tested can get tested. It's just, it's just not, it's not there yet. But they're ramping, they're ramping up. The county's ramping up, individual healthcare systems are ramping up. And until we get to a, a stable state, a status, it's going to be difficult. And it's, it's going to be confusing information out there, but we're going to do our best to make sure that we get the right information out to people and continue in that regard. So with that, I, I'll ask, I think councilmember Carr, you had, you had discussed in your comments, future agenda. I think we got those exhausted. But is there anything else you'd like to add? This is the portion, because there's, there was no action to do on, on item eight. It was just information. So we're up to future gender council items. If there's anything else you'd like to add, please feel free.
Well, I think if you're asking me specifically, I think I gave a fairly exhaustive list of.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure that you, you didn't, that you had that opportunity.
Thank you. I guess I do have one additional item if we are actually on future council initiated agenda items.
We are.
Where, road diet, what's the next step? Christina, is this already something, I'm guessing from the things that you've sent us, the things that you talked about tonight, that there is some level of conversation going on internally and therefore I don't need to ask for it to come? Do you need council to give you some direction to go do that? If so, then I am absolutely asking for it to come to us so that we can have that conversation.
Yeah. So it was quite the topic for the last town hall meeting that we had. And it's just been talked about quite a bit more and it is something that internally we're talking about. And originally, the thought was we would revisit it after the Hale Avenue extension is done. And so now the thought is potentially we start that dialogue prior to, prior to the, the completion of the work. And so it already has its own momentum. We don't need to have you have a specific item. Chris, did you want to add anything?
Sorry, Christina, just, I think we could start with something that provides the council with the review of the last, the, the last actions and the, and the previous trial that we did.
And we'll probably say a few words at the budget workshop when we're going through the capital program. We'll mention Hale Avenue and a few words about the, the potential road diet and what it would look like.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Kay, you have a future dinner item?
I think it is, and it should be really simple. And that is that I've been wondering how the decisions are made at the county health, Department of Health, how, how they make their decisions on when the COVID-19 shelter in place will end. How to make those decisions? Who makes those decisions? And is it clear to our community that we basically are adhering to the county's orders? Cause we don't really have a health department, I guess. So can that be explained in a future agenda item? I probably should have asked the question back during the last item, but I, I blanked on it. But is that something we can talk about again sooner than later?
Well, why don't we go ahead and address that as a question for item eight now anyway, since it wasn't something that we had to vote on? Because I don't think that's something you necessarily want to have to come back two weeks from now and then have it agendized. If we follow, if we follow our future dinner item procedure, it would be almost a month before this would come back to a council meeting. So if Christina would like to answer the question, sorry, city manager.
Yes. So you are absolutely correct. We do not have our own health department. We fall into the Santa Clara County Public Health Department. And so decisions are made by the public health department. And, and you know, what we continually hear from Dr. Sarah Cody is that the decisions are very much data driven. And, you know, so they, they have state guidelines, but it's really, you know, at the county level that they're making decisions on the specific county orders. And to answer your, or to respond to your request, yeah, I mean, I think we, we have in previous communications talked about how we're under the county order, but I, I think it would be just fine to reiterate that. And I think that that might be even more important if the county is going to be more restrictive after the governor announces what some of the lacks and the reopening is going to look like and if the county decides to not follow suit.
Yeah. And basically, I guess, we can't be any less strict than another agency above us. So whatever they say, we have, that's a minimum, but we have to do.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, everyone, I'll just, oh, Mayor Portem, you had, you, your hands down, it's up, it's down. You was to say? You're muted. Okay, I can't, we can't hear you.
Still muted.
All right. Christina, one on, on what council member McKay was talking about, you know, I've often wondered, is there, maybe Mayor, you know, the answer to this? With the testing, since we are at the county level, do we, do we get portioned per se, a certain amount of tests? So a certain amount of tests come into the county? Do a portion go to Morgan Hill, a portion go to different cities? I've been meaning that on the county calls and I just never get through.
I don't, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
So the county tests in their facilities, and this one facility happens to be here in Morgan Hill. However, you have to be in that category of people that need, that are allowed to be tested. It's just not open to all the citizens of Morgan Hills per se. So we're just, we're not at that stage yet. So really, it's not, it's not so much is there a place in Morgan Hill be tested? It's just that people still have to fulfill the same criteria and they can go to the county to be tested if they meet that criteria. And even if they're, even if they're not insured, but they still have to meet that criteria. That's something that the, the CEO of, of the county, Dr. Smith, has said. But again, there isn't enough tests to test everybody. And in that, in that call that I had on Monday, supervisor submitting was also on that call and he put it very succinctly. The county would like to do about 4,000 tests a week or a day, actually, minimum. The, the supervisor said that if they tested it 4,000 a day, it would take a year and a half to test everyone in the county one time. So really, it's not going to be just that everyone gets a test. There's going to have to be a strategy. I have yet to hear a strategy yet. I have yet to hear a strategy yet, and partly because of the fact that there isn't anything to have a strategy with. You need to have the test, you need to have the contact tracing to even go forward. But ultimately, we need a vaccine. You know, we can't go back to business as usual until, one, we know who has the disease and who doesn't. And two, there's a vaccine. Otherwise, what we're doing right now is the only thing we have to combat COVID-19. So, you know, as, as has been mentioned, things are changing hourly and what we can say today probably changed tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, that's, that's incredibly helpful. So as far as agenda items.
And I don't, before you go on, I didn't know if, Ms. Turner, if you wanted to add something to that?
Not to that specific response, but just in general, I just kind of wanted to sort of wrap up, you know, everything that, you know, I've heard tonight as far as what should come back.
Before you wrap up, I do believe Mayor Portem has something else she wants to add.
Yep, thank you. I wanted to see if we could look at talking about the TOT taxes with the hotels. That's the one item. And then the other item was really just the community workshops and, and having a community workshop.
Okay, Ms. Turner, you're on.
So as far as the TOT goes, so what we rolled out to the hotels is that we're not charging penalties on late TOT remittances for, I believe it's 30 days after the shelter in place is lifted. And so that's been shared with the hotels. Okay, so I, I just wanted to sort of kind of wrap up.
Christina, does that, can we, can we put that as an agenda item to discuss, to, to talk about?
So the way this goes for future agenda items, you would propose a future agenda item, then it would come back at the next meeting in a memo form, basically having the, the vote of the council to whether or not it would be put on an agenda. So that's, that's, that's the policy that we have in place.
Okay, so, you know, we, we heard some great information, great input, feedback, suggestions, you know, on, on what the council's interested in hearing about. And so I think what we'll, what we'll plan to do, you know, is come back in two weeks on May 20th. And as Councilmember Carr said, you know, we're not going to be able to come back, you know, with information or next steps on everything. So we'll come back with information on, on what we can. And, and, you know, some of what was mentioned, you know, is sort of in the works. Some of it is stuff that, you know, we haven't thought about and some of it is, you know, we've thought about it and we're, you know, there's, there's a lot that's coming in as far as suggestions from the community. And so, you know, what I want to be able to do is bring back the items and, you know, talk about where we're at or where we could be at with some of them. And, you know, just to help, I think, manage, you know, expectations is, you know, we'd want to be able to give you the list back and say, yep, you know, that's going to be out, you know, we'll take care of all those. And as, as everyone, you know, on this call knows, it's, you know, it's not going to be feasible for us to do all of them. You know, we need to make sure that we do a certain number of things and do them well. Now, with that said, is, and has been commented on by, by the council, you know, we're great at partnering with other entities. And so we'll talk about, you know, where our partners can, can help us. And the other way in which I think we really do a good job is connecting. And so that was brought up, I believe, by Councilmember Spring. And, you know, that is something we informally do all the time, you know, and, and it happens, you know, just by somebody in the community making a suggestion or identifying a need. And then for us kind of knowing in the community, you know, who, who does that sort of thing? I mean, one just example that comes to mind is, you know, on a town hall, an individual is interested in, in mass producing masks. And so we thought, okay, you know, let's hook them up with, you know, community church, you know, who's always asking, you know, how can we help? And, you know, so now they're communicating and figuring out how to sort of make that happen. And so for some of, you know, of, of what can and needs to be done, you know, it's connecting, you know, the nonprofits with businesses and so forth. And so we'll come back and I look forward to the discussion about talking about how council wants us to continue to or kind of modify how we're, you know, how we're spending both our time and our fiscal resources. So our next opportunity to connect is going to be, you know, once again, next Friday, May 15 for our budget workshop. At this point, you know, we'll start at nine o'clock, we'll probably plan to break for lunch, probably from noon to one, and then we'll have a few hours in the afternoon is, is the current plan. And if more time is needed, then we can, we can plan accordingly. But that is the plan for Friday, May 15th. And that concludes my remarks.
And I'll put in my lunch order a little bit later. And on that, I will remind my colleagues to have battery packs nearby or have your, your computer plugged in, because I don't think we've ever had anything where we've had our computers plugged in that long. There you go, Renee's already on, on top of it. So with that, I'll just close by saying, stay safe, stay healthy and stay home. Meeting adjourned, everyone. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you, Mayor, good night.
Thank you, good night.